Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is Wednesday, December 11th, our 3:00 PM special meeting. We added an additional meeting, and let's call this meeting to order. Commissioners Jacobson, Commissioner Hall, myself establish a quorum. We have no recognitions or proclamations today. And that brings us to the adoption of the consent calendar. Commissioner Jacobson or Hall, any items you'd like to highlight or poll?
Yes, there is one item I'd like to mention. The contract with the research group LLC to update our 2014 report on the Lincoln County economy, which Mr. Hughesing, we will remember in 2004, when he was executive director at Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association, did a coastwide study, very comprehensive. Unfortunately, there wasn't, I guess, the critical mass of parties 10 years later to support an update. So we had an update done then, and I think it's great because that we're going to do this now, because so many times I have seen on grant applications, presentations, the information generated from these studies has been truly valuable to us.
Commissioner Thompson, that process.
Yes, I remember 2014. He said, "By gosh."
Director Hughesing, could you make sure we get it on the mic if you're going to talk to us?
Yeah. I remember Commissioner Thompson saying, "By golly, if nobody else is going to do it, we need to do it."
Make sure your mic is read.
I believe we're good to go. Commissioners Otto Hughesing, Director of the Planning Department, yeah, I'm delighted to hear that's happening again. That economic study was done in the past for every census period, so when new census material came out. So that was done up and down the entire Oregon coast. It really became the bible of Oregon coast economics. And it was, it was, it was just too bad that the ability to keep funding that from the state and everything like that fell apart. And, and again, when, when I got here in 2012, Commissioner Thompson said, "This information is out of date. It's become so critical."
Yep.
And I said, "Well, it ain't getting done no more." And so Terry made sure that we did it. But the value of doing it is you, and I think at that point, too, what was, what was done the last time we did it, we added the marine science sector component to the, so in the pie chart that we gathered, the consultants gathered information about that sector, too, because it means so much for Lincoln County. So, and of course, the reason to do this on a periodic basis is to develop trend information.
Right.
So I am delighted to hear that's happening, and there's something to be said for using the same consultants, because your, your trend information really is going to be accurate, because they're using a lot of the same assumptions in the process. So thank you for doing that, and I'm glad it's happening and.
Director Hughesing, while we've got you, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Jacobson.
No, nothing.
I had heard we were working on, I think you told me about it, too. It's probably been in the works for a little while, right? Because I know it was requested some time ago to, you know, revise the study.
Yeah.
Are you satisfied, then, with the categories that have been added?
I'm, I'm going to say with great transparency that I have not read the work scope, and I've not been involved in it, but I'm, without even having seen it, I'm completely confident, because, again, you're hiring the very experienced people that have been involved with doing the study in the past. And that really means you're going to, your trend information is really going to have a lot of validity, because it's being done that way. And so I'm unaware of the, the, I, again, I'm just assuming that a lot of the same categories, we, we, the Lincoln County, added the marine science component last time, so. But I'm just, I couldn't help but provide some feedback on that.
And I think.
Because it was such a big part of my life back in the day, and it was so important, did so many good things, and people were able to plug the information into grant applications. So it was really heartbreaking when that fell apart. The ports reporting system also fell apart right around that same time.
Shame.
The ability for the people up and down the coast to work started to erode.
Well, I'll make a motion if we're ready to adopt the consent calendar as it's presented.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that moves us to public hearings. We have none, decision and action, none. And discussion and information, Cinda Bruce, our Director of Transit, is going to discuss county's transit stiff application projects 2527. So, Cinda, good to see you.
Hello. I brought a stiff advisory committee member with me in case, in case you had questions. I would have a, a committee member here to make sure we get the answer right.
Could you both introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm Cinda Bruce. I'm the Program Director of Lincoln County Transit.
Lyndon Agabauer, I'm on the stiff committee and have been for a number of years.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, go ahead.
So I'm here to give a staff report on the statewide transportation improvement program for the 2025-27 biennium. Section 112 of House Bill 2017 provides a dedicated source of funding to expand, improve, and maintain public transit services. Funding's made available every two years to support access to jobs, maintain current services, enhance transit services, improve mobility, relieve congestion, and reduce greenhouse The stiff advisory committee members are appointed by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Committee membership requirements include a public transportation provider, a disabled representative, and an elderly, an elderly representative. Lincoln County also includes a user representative and an educational institution, low-income representative to round out our committee, and there's a minimum requirement of five committee members. So this is our, this is where I got to get my glasses, I'm sorry. So also, I need to let you know that our stiff advisory committee did meet on October 25th, November 8th, and November 15th to discuss and prioritize the project. So all meetings were, were open to the public with an opportunity to attend virtually. So I'm going to give you the stiff project list in order, with the first project first. We have 14 altogether, including our contingency reserve. So our number one project is our school transportation, and the committee decided that, you know, it's a good thing to have it as our number one priority, since it is a legislative mandate for this funding, that we provide 1% for school transportation. So it's part of a mandate, we might as well make sure that we get that prioritized very high. We plan on spending $25,000 for the 2526 fiscal year, and again, in the 2627 fiscal year. Also, any funding that we do not spend in 2526 can be carried over to the 2627 fiscal year. Our number two project is our expanded Lincoln City Loop. It includes Sunday service and holiday service. This was right beside our school transportation. These were our first projects that, that we implemented, and they've both been very successful. I've put in $60,000 for the 2526 fiscal year and moved it up to $62,000 for the following fiscal year to account for cost of living adjustments. Our number three project is the East County Expansion. That's to add Sunday service, a 10-hour day on the blue line, and include service on the west side of Soletts. We were actually able to implement this project in December of 2023. So we have $87,000 budgeted for 2526, and I took it up to 90 for 2627 expenditures. The number four project is our South County Inner Community Service, and that's to add Sunday service, 10 hours a day. That was also started in December of 2023. It's been very successful. $60,000 for the 2526 expenses and 62 for the 2627. Match funds for grants, we have $580,000 in each, each fiscal year, and this includes our 5311 funding, our partnership fundings, our, our Walport, our new hub funding for that, for the match. So it, it's a bunch of, pretty much, all the match that I could figure that we were going to need for those years. Some of our funding actually is close to 50%, so that's why you see a higher number. And our marketing, we have $250,000 for the first year and $225,000 for the second year. And that sounds like a lot, but we think we're going to need to hire consultants to help with some of this. It's kind of a big project. It'll be our first formal marketing branding project. We have done our, our three brands, three services that we started with, and we just want to make sure that everything kind of surrounds that and comes together the way it should. We have printed materials, schedule, driver uniforms, bus schedule holders, partnerships, driver training, travel training, community engagement. So I've, I've made it really broad to encompass, because this is my first rural project like this, and I don't want to have something important drop. That's why we also want to get a professional in to make sure that we do it right. Although we've put together some schedules before. Number seven is our bus stop signage, and we're looking at about 100 bus stop signs produced and installed throughout the county. Again, we're going to need to hire somebody to help us with this, because there are right of way issues, and, you know, you got to figure out what's ODOT, what's city, it's, it's pretty complicated for me, anyway. I don't really understand it. And again, we want to make sure that it's done right the first time. This is something that's been in previous stiff applications, and we've had a hard time moving forward, just trying to get the cities to kind of, you know, we're all struggling with staffing issues and such, so, you know, the committee just decided, this needs to be done, and if we need to hire someone to come onboard and help us get it right, then that's what we need to do. And I thought that was a great response from the committee. Number eight is two Category E vehicles. Those will replace our dial-a-ride buses. This is also kind of considered. This is also kind of considered like the senior, although Dial-A-Ride, now I don't want to confuse everybody, because Dial-A-Ride is open for the general public, anybody that wants to use it. But this last biennial funding, they've included the STF, remember our our special transportation dollars that was just for senior and disabled populations? They've included that into the pot. And they want to make sure that we are our those populations are getting the money that's in there for the senior and disabled populations, the population funding. All of our projects do assist with our senior and disabled population transportation because all of our transit is for everybody. We don't believe in segregating our populations. So it works out well. Shop equipment is number nine, and that's going to be for a four-post hoist, a DEF dispenser. Now, some years ago, we did purchase a DEF dispenser.
Can you explain what that is?
Yes, that's why I thought so. In order to make less pollution, less emissions for our with our diesel vehicles, it's actually an additive that's added to the diesel. But they're in two separate, you put them in in two different places, but then they somehow they combine and it it mitigates some of the effects of the pollution. We purchased a DEF tank, and it's had a lot of use because, you know, the road department also uses diesel vehicles. So anybody in the county who uses diesel may need to use this this DEF tank. The one that we have is getting rusty from the elements and the salt air, and we want to get it replaced before there's an event that could potentially damage the environment. So I know that Wayne is looking to make sure that it's a stainless steel with special powder coat to make it last longer. So there's a there's a four-post hoist, the DEF dispenser, cabinet parts washer, and other tools is needed for for working on our vehicles. And again, I make it broad because the more specific I make it, if something happens that we're not expecting, the funding can't be used for that. So, you know, they kind of encourage us to keep it flexible. The cost for those things will be $225,000 altogether. Our South County Loop, which has also been on our loop for a couple of our of these bienniums, is the Walport City Circular Loop. We're hoping to get that up and running Monday through Friday, eight hours a day. The service will not operate on Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day. And the committee also wanted to bring back the shopper activity ban. It wasn't in our last application because of the issues with the drivers. But we're getting more information out there. We're hoping to get more drivers. And, you know, the community really has a need for early morning and after-hours events. And I think that between the committee and maybe working with some people who are very excited about this from the senior centers, maybe we can come up with some good protocols for ensuring that our folks can make it. The people who don't drive, who can't get places after hours can get out and, you know, maybe see something at the Performing Arts Center or go to a movie or.
Or just work a late shift.
Work a late shift. There you go. So we're hoping to pull that together and and make some good things happen with with the shopper activity ban. We have $100,000 for 2526 and for 2627. Also, when we as we get in some of the new buses that have been put in the budget, as we replace buses, we use them as backup buses. So we don't have to get a brand-new bus for everything that we start because Fleet Service does a fantastic job at maintaining our buses. So number 12, Lincoln City contacted me some time ago. They have the two new housing complexes on Highway 101, 25th and 29th, I believe they're at.
That's correct.
And they're pretty big. I'm not sure exactly what the.
The one on 25th is 107 apartments, and the one on 29th, Waco-Ma Place, is 44.
Wow. So these are going to be highly utilized, I'm sure. The city has already started the design, and, you know, they've already put a lot of work into it, but they did contact us to see if we would be able to contribute to the pullouts. Being on Highway 101 and as many people that are going to be there, pullouts for these locations are really important. So we're we're putting in $125,000, which is probably a bargain considering the total costs that these probably cost out at. Our 13th project is to update computers and to get Adobe. It's come to our attention that Adobe Reader is going to be charged out. You used to like buy a license once, and now they're going to charge us annually. So it's it's a cost that will go well in here to ensure that we can can keep our Adobe services. I also have desks and chairs in here, but the most important thing are the chairs. It's been a while since we've got new chairs, and, you know, ergonomics is very important to make sure our our employees sit long hours. So we want to make sure that we keep them safe and ergonomically sound. The last project is our contingency reserve, and I always like to keep money in both years in case of cost overruns or unexpected expenses for for things. That rounds out our our project list. So if anybody has any questions.
Sure, I do have a couple of questions, if that's all right.
Commissioner Jacobson, please go. Yeah, I do, too. I'm just holding them all till the end.
All right, I'm talking about your list of projects you just presented. So on number one, which was school transportation, it said grades nine to 12. I thought this had been expanded to six to 12.
It has been expanded.
Okay.
We are allowing those people to ride because, and this is the reason why, most of our schools are actually middle and high school combined now.
A lot of them are.
The thing is, I can only charge the grades nine through 12 to this.
Okay, so that's why that nine to 12 shows up on this. Got it.
Right, because we're only allowed. I actually put it in my application last year because I was just so proud that we were going to do this. And they're all, oh, wait a minute. It kind of surprised me that they were like, you can't you you can't go down to seventh grade in the funding. I'm thinking, oh, that's.
Well, I guess it's just a clarification for the public then that it's open for grades six to 12.
Absolutely. It's open.
Only one is covered by this particular pot of funding. Okay. My second question was on number five, the match funds for grants. You can talk about this. I'm assuming that most of this is matching federal.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's those are my questions.
There's no match for the STIF project.
That's what I figured. Yeah. All right. That's it. Thanks.
Hey, thanks, Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Hall?
No questions.
Okay, Cinda, appreciate the overview. Looking to Category Six, marketing. I'm glad you're investing in this.
Oh, good.
I know Geneva and Ken have helped you out quite a bit.
Oh, they've been amazing. I'm sure that they're like, really, Cinda, just get your own person. We got a job.
Yeah.
They've been amazing, really amazing.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing it out. I I've seen how much work that they've put into it as well. And so it sounds like you'll have someone unify the branding. Everything will kind of be cohesive, or that's the idea?
Yes, it certainly is.
Okay. One of the things I think you'd spoken about was that there might be the ability to kind of have real-time tracking of our buses. Is that still a possibility?
Yes, we do have swiftly. What we've been working on is getting the updated transponders into the buses. They're little units that are wired in with wire harnesses, and that's what actually gives out the information. And also, our Five County Connector, Northwest Connector website, our we got someone new to keep that updated, and they are going to have the the swiftly, the onsite tracking right on the website. So if somebody pulls it up, they don't need like four apps on their phone. If they have the website, they can pull up the website. They'll be able to access the the swiftly and also our token transit because, you know, we don't take credit cards, but we have token transit, and it allows passengers, customers, to purchase bus passes with their phone. And then they come on and they show their phone, and there's indication that it's there. And that's how we've gotten around the the credit card thing because a lot of people use credit or debit cards.
Yeah, they certainly do, don't they? And they use their phone for those transactions, too. So so great. Number seven, bus stop signs. Where do you plan to put most of them? Are those peppered throughout the county largely Newport?
Largely at the, well, largely they're needed in Newport because Lincoln City does a really good job at helping us get them up.
Okay.
They've really made public transit a priority.
Okay.
So we have our lists together, and mostly they will be placed at the bus stops. Because, you know, when you say there's a bus stop someplace, people still don't know where to stand. Like, there's there's a lot of places. So a bus stop just kind of gives a visual of where the bus will be stopping.
Okay, good. The E buses?
E is just a category of buses. So our big buses are the B buses, like the 32, 35-foot, 32-passenger. Our like 30-foot or 20-passengers, that's our C category. D is like the current Dial-A-Rides that we have. And in talking to Wayne, the Fleet Manager, he really pushed for us to go down to Category E. You still have the height, but you don't have like the duallys on back. Like, he just figured we didn't need a Category D for the service we provide on Dial-A-Ride.
And are those, do you still need Class C for the E-style bus drivers licenses?
You don't you don't have to have a CDL for the for the Dial-A-Ride size or the E.
Uh, okay.
Also, with the E size, we're thinking they might not be as wide, so we may be able to get to more residences. Like, sometimes we can't go to people's places because of driveways or just different issues. So we're we're thinking this could help with that as well.
Would that be a size of bus that would be more likely to be electric if there was electrification ever?
Yes.
It would be. Okay. Okay, thank you. Almost there. Lynda, thank you so much for being on the committee all these years. How is it going?
Oh, this year was wonderful beyond all the others. We added an additional meeting. We got to really chatting amongst each other and realize the expertise that comes with each member of that committee, and that we just need to dig. And we can come up with so many great ideas. You're talking about the high school and middle school kids riding the bus. One of the issues that we discovered is we don't have late afternoon buses for kids. And that's something Cinda will try to tag on to some other stuff, just like you said, Katie, getting people to evening shifts, that kind of thing, so that our students can also have that same opportunity. Having Sandy as her assistant.
And administrator.
Has been so beneficial because we're current on all the information that Cinda needs us to see. We see it before the meetings. We can ask questions. She's only one person. And adding the marketing piece with additional support will make that that happen. Because that's one of the things that people don't know about, even on this, what is it, Next Door? I actually I stay off of Next Door.
Not used it.
And I get irritated.
I see it. I see it.
I actually responded last week because Dial-A-Ride is there. You know, this lady was asking questions, Dial-A-Ride. And I said, you also have the city loop, and I told her how much. And she finally said, well, I think my diabetes will keep me from riding the bus.
No.
That's sad.
I know. But it generated so much conversation with people I'm with, pick of the litter, who see that. And I do, I keep my name to myself pretty much, but I couldn't stand it one more minute. But we don't toot our own horn enough.
No.
The addition of Marcy from Lincoln City has been such a value for us. It's very difficult to get our Lincoln City representative to come all the way down here for meetings. They say, well, what's the reason? So and now I'm the handicap rep. I think I was at large for a while, but I moved into my own category. At least I'm not the elderly one yet. We have somebody older than me. It's such a good committee.
That's great.
And I want to compliment Tim. He attended our first meeting.
Yes.
And had such good help to us so that we met the guidelines and could be here today. And that was even adding a meeting at the committee's request. And that he had comments that really made a difference. And he attended our last meeting also.
Yes.
And had some comments directly related to Newport and the couplet that they're proposing. And yeah, I'm on record, I'm not liking the couplet. I think it's a waste of money. And this really speaks again to the width of the roads that we need. You need 12-feet lanes to turn our buses. And it doesn't matter about the other traffic traveling up in the north and south. They're on their own. You got to have a 12-foot lane. And he was very, very specific about that. And just after that, I watched, I always watch city council meetings. Cinda and Tim did a really nice presentation to city council. And surprised them, I think, a little bit because they came to give good stuff, and they weren't coming to ruffle any feathers, talking about the new rap, talking about other things, and got out like quickly. Oh, okay. But they've opened the door, I believe. Just some wonderful conversation with the city of Newport where we have not had good cooperation.
Yeah, I'm glad he's been helpful. I mean, he definitely has his eye for
Yeah.
the marketing piece, right, too?
I think so, yeah.
And Ken has been amazing. Like, he's had to adjust meetings like a couple for us. He's just, I just don't know how you do it, Ken. Like, he's he's my guy. He's just like, he's.
Ken is amazing. I agree with you.
The community that we have right now is just so eclectic in what we do, what we bring, and can open so many doors that others cannot because they know where they are.
And they're so supportive. And like Woody, Woody Crowbar is another one of our new.
He was new last time, right?
Yes, last time he was. And he's our our school representative, but he's also our like low-income homeless representative because the schools track that so closely. like low income homeless representative because the schools track that so closely that he is a wealth of information.
What do they call him, Mr. Woody? I know who you're talking about.
Oh, I love Woody. Isn't he great?
Having the young folks.
We do. Are we okay to say that?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we got some, we got some young.
Lincoln County, we can do that.
So demographically, I mean, when you think about the younger riders, is there marketed differences in what they're looking for compared to the older generation? Or how do you separate the two and their needs?
I really just want our younger folks to learn, you know, like the students to learn how to read bus schedules. That, you know, we, we have a, an, what did we call that?
Read paper schedules instead of phone schedules?
Yes. Be able to, and learn about the transfers. I mean, now's the time for them to do it because they don't even have to pay to learn. So our travel ambassador is going to help a lot because when we first started this, we actually went to the schools and did travel training and some of them were, were with the special students and we taught them about stranger danger and keeping in contact with the driver if any, you know, if they're feeling uncomfortable or just teaching them how to pay their fare, that they have to use their seat belts. And that went over so big that ever since then they've been wanting us back, but we've been so, our bandwidth has been so thin with like the supervisors covering routes, et cetera, to maintain services. But I do see us climbing out of this. I do.
Good.
Well, talking about the students, kick of the litter, where I am on the board and I volunteer, we've been trying to hire an assistant manager because we've had some issues with managers. We have an excellent gal right now, but she cannot do the whole thing. We had 75 applications on Indeed. And three of those were young people, two 16 year olds and a 15 year old. And what we plan to do is to have them come in for an interview for a volunteer. And I know we have them coming from Solette's. That's an opportunity to get the transit involved in their coming to do other things, not just to visit a friend or go to a movie, but to actually volunteer and get our feet back into the doors of the high schools and get those kids to come in and work with us. So just so many things came out of our, our stiff committee. You, you would just enjoy sitting in and listening to us.
Wonderful.
Well, pass on our gratitude for, you know, the committee's involvement. And certainly yours over the years. So it's really, really important.
Bill Turner has been with us forever as well. Like Bill Turner's, I just, they're just all amazing.
He's a sweetie.
And Commissioner Miller, I don't know if you're done with your questions. I did kind of have one more that came up.
Yeah, no, I really think I am.
Okay. I know in a super brief conversation with our county administrator, you know, he wanted this to go on before the end of the year. This was under discussion information, but was there something that needed to be done before the end of the year with this? Or did you just need to present to us before the end of the year? I just want to make sure we're not missing anything.
We're not missing anything. I was hoping to have another opportunity for public comment if anybody had any.
Are they adopting the plan?
Yes, yes. You will need to adopt the, the stiff plan.
Okay. So we're probably doing that at our 12 18 meeting. Is that the plan? Okay.
Yes, yes. We decided we do discussion and then the
Okay.
action. And by that time I can have the sheet of paper that we need for you to Casey, Commissioner Miller, I believe that the chair normally signs off on it.
Sure.
Um, but we'll get that together and I'll get it all filled out for you.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll, we'll have that back on the 18th and get it all wrapped up by the end of the calendar year. Okay. Anything else before we're done?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your service and the other folks.
It's amazing what such a small amount of money can add up to. And you know me, I talk about that kind of stuff. I just, I just need that one word and I'm talking about transit or pick a litter. And yeah, it's, it's amazing what that has done. Just amazing.
Well, good.
Thank you.
Yep. Glad it's evolving. Thanks. You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, uh, let's see, that moves us out of discussion and information into reports. We have no formal reports. Do we have any?
Can I add one thing, like a staff report? So the STR moratorium is going to expire on January 1st, 2025. Is there any action you want to take on that? Do you want to bring it back for a discussion item at our 12 18 meeting or?
I think it should be noticed for public input. So if we could come back on our 12 18
Yes.
Meeting and have it as a
Discussion item.
Oh, I guess it would be decision action if we potentially needed to make a decision by January 1. But I think it should be noticed.
Yes. So you would like to bring that back?
I would support that as well.
Yes. Yeah. Sounds good. Okay. That'll be on the 18th. All right. Thank you, Council Yule. Commissioner reports. Either of you have anything to report?
Yeah, I just, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say I do not.
Okay. I was just have something real briefly. And last week while I was attending virtually is at the National Association National Association of Counties Urban and Rural Conference that was in Sonoma that had a kind of a wildfire recovery, natural disaster recovery focus. So learning about their fires they had in 2017 and 2019 and hate to say that we were lucky in 2020, you know, losing 300 homes. It's not the right thing to say, but uh, really made me, you know, reminiscent of that time and the recovery challenges that all communities face with wildfire and also like how bad it could have been. And hopefully, you know, we're more prepared than we were in 2020. But I mean, some of those communities lost 7,000 homes in a matter of hours. So
7,000 homes.
In a few hours. I mean, the fires literally create their own weather. They were showing us video of how they, you know, create fire tornadoes basically that come through that community. And you know, we drove through where their fire had been and you know, a lot of recovery efforts have took place since then. A whole huge community is burned, but you know, a lot of similar, a lot of similar struggles that we've been through that they were as well. So. Anyways, just reflecting on, you know, being prepared.
Commissioner Jacobson, when you have that kind of an impact, um, cause I know 300 felt like a lot.
Felt like too many. Yes.
And you've been working on that for years. When you hit that kind of level of 7,000, did you notice anything in regard to FEMA's scalability compared to what we went through? Just thoughts on that?
Very similar struggles, uh, meeting with their kind of public works director there and you know, he immediately kind of started in on their struggles. You know, we could never get FEMA to pay for our roads and they could never get FEMA to pay for their roads. Either. Some similar struggles, I would say. You know, just on getting FEMA to pay for certain infrastructure. They had a, uh, actually a lower rate of individuals getting help from FEMA than we had. Um, ours was like maybe 30% and there was actually, you know, much lower than that than people that got kind of direct assistance from FEMA. So like I said, very, very similar struggles regardless of what state you're in. But really what I came home with is just, you know, our need to continue to be vigilant and do our tabletops like we do every year. And you know, it also made me rethink my family's plan a little bit. We always have the plan, like we go home, we grab the stuff, we have a packing list. And it made me realize that you may not be going home. Some of those fires move so quickly in those communities that, um, you know, if you live 20 minutes or even 10 minutes from where you might be working or out, you may not have time to go and, and do all that. You might just be with what you have in your car. So. Anyway, repacking the emergency bags as a family is what happened as soon as I got home, but.
Yeah. Great recommendation because just to reflect on my sense that FEMA, when they came here, it's like, okay, it's going to solve all the problems. And you know, it's not like that. And I think a lot of people have the impression that FEMA is going to make them whole. And we know that's not the case. So yeah, get your go bags ready.
Yep. That's all the reports I have.
Okay. Um, I sent you my report late in the evening. I understand that. So just be aware that it's been sent to you. Um, so let's see, without that public comments, doesn't look like that gentleman's having any public comment today. We have nobody else in the room. So we'll go online and see if anyone has joined us.
Don't waste that.
Oh, just staff. Okay. All right. Um, and written comment. Can anything come in?
Comment. Written comment is attached to the agenda. Um, most of it was about FEMA, but now I can't recall if something was not, it was, all of it is about prospective ordinance 537. One of those comments was urging the county to adopt the ordinance with somebody who was here for the last meeting.
Okay. Okay. So if anybody's, obviously no one is online with us, they might be watching the live stream. We're coming back on the 18th for that. And in regard to that public hearing, just some advice from council. Any emails we've received in regard to the hearing? Send those to Ken. How do we make sure those float back around?
Yeah, it's gonna get actually to Kathleen. Um, so Kathleen and Ken can receive those and we'll make sure those get in the record.
Okay. And Council Yule in regard to on the 18th, a couple of constituents, I spoke with them. Do I just declare that at the next meeting? Um, what's the best process for that?
So at the meeting, I'll ask if there's been any ex-party communications. And then at that time you could disclose that you had communications with these community members about the ordinance.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else there on public comments? And we move to executive session. O R S 1926602.
That's an I.
I. Thank you. Um, so what is our situation here?
Well, Mr. Chair, I understand one of the key potential participants in this meeting is not available today. So I'm going to propose we postpone and reschedule whenever all parties are available.
I would agree with that. I don't think we need a formal motion. I think we can just have consensus.
Okay. All right. Consensus that we are going to postpone and reschedule. Okay. Very good. So just before we adjourn, let everybody note that our next meeting is December 18th here and hybrid at 10 a.m. And then January 8th, as we go into the new year. Anything from anyone before we close this one out? Okay. Thanks everyone for